If I can direct your attention to the line out on such risk management. We had the property casualty in there, but what we did not have was a code compliance protected budget over the next 10 years of $3 million. So we added that this morning and this is the most reflective, most accurate total here.
Eighteen million is correct.
It'd be eighteen rather as opposed to fifteen.
Our point he's showing now is correct. Your printed out, because we printed it out before we made that correction.
We can always print out and do with that.
One thing I did want to amend my statement from before. The capital transfer also does include the property casualty insurance. So that would be 5.5 million. So it'd be the 2.5, the 1.5, and the 1.5. So we'd be losing even more than we thought, you know, that the general fund would have to sustain without that revenue coming in. So I just wanted to amend that. All right. So I took all these figures that Mr. Bishop and everybody came up with and I plugged them into a 10-year plan. So the first thing I wanted to do was look back. And since 2007, 2008, which was the last year that we were able to levy 2.0 mils, our millage has decreased now to 1.5. We were able to levy a .25 critical capital outlay from '09-10 to '12-13. We have lost 29.6 million in capital improvement at the form of taxes over the last 10 years due to the reduction in the millage. Property values have also decreased by about $3.3 billion. About 2.5, the three of that was due to Duke and the settlement with them. Okay, this is a chart of the capital millage that was actually levied for the last 10 years. And as you can see, in 2007, 2008, we collected or we levied 23.5 million. And we go all the way down to '16-'17, which is next year, we will levy about $12.9 or $13 million, which is almost half.
I think what's key on that slide, the slides that Tammy's about to show you is that's where the issue lies. It's not in the expenditures, because we've always, with our MGT report and our needs assessment analysis that we've done, our 10-year windows, we've always known we've had the need for the repairs, the buses, and the technology. None of that's a surprise. But what is driving this discussion today is the lack of revenues and how those have continued to decrease every year. There's not PICO money, there's not classroom for kids money, the property values have declined, the millage rate has not gone back up. So you can see from that last chart where, you know, when we did a five-year work plan in 2007 and '08, projected out for five years, we were thinking with two-mil money, 23, 24 million dollars a year, and two-mil money is now 1.5 mil and it's 12.96. So that's a big difference when you start projecting it over a five-year period. That's what's driving this discussion.
That's a very good point. So anyone who says we'll use your money wisely more than you're doing, there is no money to use.
That's exactly right. This wasn't created because the school board dedicated $250,000 towards a pool at the YMCA. Anybody can look at that, it's third grade math, you can figure that out.
So if we had been able to levy 2-point mils with the tax values as they were, you can see each year we've lost over $2 million. And then when we lost the .25 critical capital outlay, we started losing over $4 million. And this totals over the 10 years to $29.6 million. So I just put it into a graph for you to see the values, how they have declined by 27%. And you can see we went to a low in '14-'15, and we're gradually going back up little by little. And so therefore, our budget, of course, hit a low in '14-'15. You can see that graph goes down pretty fast. We are going up a little bit because our values are going up, but not significant enough to reach the '07-'08 monies that we levy. So they have declined by 45%. Okay, we have additional capital funding sources that we have also lost in the last 10 years.
Just as a question before we... On the taxes have declined, the 45%, this is a part that I think that we're having to ensure that we communicate to the public. Because I think even, you know, I sometimes think we've looked at this so often that we just become, you know, well, this is the case, we've got more, we have less money again this year than we had the last year. And so we continue to make those adjustments that now we are, because I started, you know, in 2010, and you all were here even before that. But, you know, we have now, as Mr. Calasanti said, even in his department, he's gone from 55 employees down to 43 employees. And while that may have even been through attrition in some cases, the amount of areas they have to cover have not reduced, they've increased. But the cost that taxpayers are paying for has dropped by 45%. So when it's said that we are not reducing the cost to taxpayers, that's a 45% difference that taxpayers have been paying for capital expenditures. And that's a significant amount of money. I'm not sure that many other government agencies in this community could probably have to say that they have the largest amount of facilities they have to make, and that we've done it with a 45% reduction in cost. Am I missing anything in what I just said?
No, no, sir, you're not.
But now, add more property tax revenue.
Yes.
That's all we get. From 2008.
2008 is the first column, yes.
So our decline, our 45% decline has been since '08.
Yes, sir.
We go up one year, it's not 45%. If we go up to 2009, I mean, '08 was pretty much the peak rate.
No, it's from 2007-'08 to 2016-'17, we've gone down 45%.
Cumulatively.
Well, 45, we're at 45% of what we were in '07-'08.
But if we look at '09-'10, what percentage we at there? I mean, it's gonna be...
I could calculate that for you.
But you also, at that point, it didn't just happen overnight, correct?
Right.
But if you look over since 2013, we're now in the fourth budget cycle that was in the 45% from what it was then. In fact, in '14-'15, it was less than it was, it would have been more than 45%. Because at that point...
'14-'15 was the low.
Was the low.
Right.
And we're only slightly up from there. We're about, you know, $400,000 more than we were that year.
Right.
And we're about $200,000 a year. So we also, yes, we did have those others situations, but again, we're talking about sustainability moving forward. This, we're not going back up the same way we came back down.
Right. But yeah, we all have to realize too, that that was kind of a bubble, right? When the property values were at that point, when we were in 2007-'08, we were comparing to an unrealistic high in a lot of...
But you also were funded by 2 mils instead of 1.5.
We've lost a half a mil.
We had the 2 mils, and then we went to 1.75.
And you had PICO dollars on top of that.
Right.
Just to refresh our memory, the deep energy, when they tested the tax value, we lost a little or two things.
Right, the 2.5 mil.
That was not accounted for in the bubble. So that was in addition to the reduction in property values. The reduction in property value, reduction in...
And since 2013, and this is what I think is important, it's just like you're saying, unless property values started skyrocketing, we're not getting back to those 2008 funding levels in the next five years. And even if they did increase to where they were in 2008, we're still only collecting a cap of 1.5 mils. So it's still not getting back up there. So our issue that we're faced with is where are we five and 10 years from today? And it's from a funding model, we don't, it's not there.
You know, with Mr. Calas, it really doesn't matter how we got there, the point is the money's not there. I mean, so that's the point, is either, at the end of the day, you're gonna have one of two choices, either to cut what you plan on doing drastically, or you cut, or you figure out a way to increase the revenue, because nobody else is gonna help us. It's either gonna, it's gotta be ourself, we're gonna have to either not do projects, not do repairs, or find another revenue source.
But even if we didn't do any of the needs that we talked about on the east side, if we did nothing to do with any of those projects, we still can't fund our most basic expenses. I'm going back to that $4 million.
All about maintenance.
Just maintenance needs.
You're absolutely right.
By year six, we can't fund maintenance unless we're gonna go to the general budget.
Same with the bond, though, for the Christian High School.
Right, but I'm assuming because of that, we have a bond rating, we're gonna have to fund that.
Oh, yes.
So you're, but you're right.
It's still gonna come from...
It's still gonna have to come, so yeah.
The amount of your 12 million that you're dealing with.
Right. So you're right, Mr. Cal, I apologize.
It's fair to them.
So we're seven to eight million dollars by year six, that is gonna, we'd have to be coming from then the general fund.
Yeah.
Or we start letting schools deteriorate substantially to make up $8 million a year or we're as, and I would like to say too, that it doesn't mean programs aren't affected, but there's just no way that we do that, because in some cases, the state's gonna mandate certain levels to us, as they have with technology. We can scale back certain things for the next year or two, but at some point, they're still gonna mandate certain levels that we have to do. Classroom size, I think, is one of the biggest challenges we know in the fund, that we just don't know where that affects. And I know the secondary levels don't work. So I'm sorry.
Okay, so additional capital funding that we've lost over the last 10 years, and this is comparing '07-'08 to '15-'16. As you can see, we received about $11.6 million in '07-'08 between PICO maintenance, PICO new construction, class size reduction, and impact fee funding to this current year, which we will receive about $418,000. So we went several years with no PICO maintenance, PICO new construction's gone, class size reduction is gone, and capital impact fee funding is very limited on what we have left there with the county.
So you're going from $11 million, $11,500,000 to 14, wait, 418,000.
418,000.
That's like a ton.
Right, so the loss that is up at the top, $11.15, is the difference between '07-'08 and '15-'16.
And that's on top of the act of law.
Yes, sir.
That's additional impacts in the year 40.
Yeah, those are 40 million. Conservatively, 40 million.
$15 million.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am. All right, so if we do nothing, if we do not levy a tax and we go along how we are right now with our current revenue sources, we estimate school taxable value rising, property values rising about 1% a year, that's to be conservative. We're looking at, this is the first five years of the revenue, and this has to be added into the first five years of expenses. And these expenses do not include doing anything with Inverness Primary, Inverness Middle, Floral City, or Crystal River High, because they're just the general facilities, projects that need to be done to maintain our current schools. So as you see, once we put all these updated figures in, at the end of five years, we're at negative $6.2 million in our fund balance. So beginning in fiscal year 2019-20, at that point, we would have, this general fund would have to start taking on property casualty, all of maintenance salaries, and all the maintenance projects, because a capital fund could not sustain itself at that point. So then we move on to the next five, go ahead, sorry.
Little, little hurry, we go into red at 2020.
And really, I know Mr. Muller talked about, you know, this isn't, really, it's not five years out. If we don't, if we don't have a revenue source, we're gonna have to start making decisions, critical decisions, within two to three years. I mean, we're gonna have to start making big decisions now.
We're gonna have to start now.
But it'll be really, it'll impact us really, if we look at fiscal year 2020, I mean, we're already, we're out of deficit.
Yes.
I think this board's gonna be having to, after, if today we decide one direction or the other, we're either gonna have to decide how we are going to plan for the use of resources, or we're gonna have to start planning exactly how we're gonna start cutting, because we're gonna have to start cutting and making a plan to cut now. And what it appears is, what we're gonna have to do is turn to the general fund, because there is no other resource if that's the case. That also means that if this board was to decide to go forward and this tax was not approved by the voters, we will then be having to plan then shortly after that election as to how we will be having to cut the general budget.
And you're, like many of you do, and one of the things I always brought up about bringing people into the county is the fact that they say the school system, a system high performing, that's used upfront to say, come on down, because we have a school system you want for your kids. We have to be cutting everything, or we won't have it, we can't have it, because we won't have money for it. And that's very disturbing, that it's a domino effect, not just the school system effect, everybody is affected, all businesses are affected.
I agree.
And these figures, keep in mind, are doing nothing at Floral City, nothing at IPS, nothing at IMS, and nothing at Crystal River. So this is not addressing any of the MGT priorities. If we move on to the next five years, each year, the revenue, we keep increasing the property value by 1%. So keep in mind, this is the ending fund balance of the prior year added to the revenue. So it looks like we're okay, but once we add in the expenses each year, in 10 years, we would be $20.3 million in the hole if we continue.
All bankroll.
Well, by then, if that were to continue, and we know this board could never allow that to continue, they would be replaced. Everyone here would have been replaced by that.
Correct. We couldn't sustain right there.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we already know, have we already been informed that our PICO money is gonna be reinstated at some point? I see...
It's the PICO maintenance money? And when we go into the five-year work plan each year, when it comes, becomes available and Mr. Dixon opens that up, the state tells us what our PICO funds are. So that, it has not opened this year yet, those are based on when we did it last year, and then we just continued that ending figure. We were being conservative adding that in.
That's at the end of July.
Right, the end of July is when it'll open, so we'll know the next five years. They don't give us the figures 10 years out.
We haven't got PICO construction.
PICO new construction, no, not since '07.
We're not anticipating that.
Right, that's for PICO maintenance.
That's just PICO maintenance.
The other issue that we, you know, and we just have no clue what impact it will have, is, for example, in all of the act of law and taxes and other funding, that's assuming that we don't have any influx of more students from out of the county. Because for every time that we have a student that comes in this county, there will not be a, they will create a demand that we have, for example, classroom size, but there'll be no act of law and tax money that we get from that, because it won't travel from their county to us. The general funds for them, the base student allocation will come to us, but none of the cost, all the costs will be bared by the act of law and taxpayers in Citrus County alone. And we don't know, because of the open enrollment, what that even is going to be. I mean, we just have no clue.
All right, so if we levy the point, or we go forward with the surtax, and then we turn around and we borrow out $30 million, this is the first five years and what we're looking at. And as you can see, the surtax is estimated to bring in about $6.4 million a year. The first year, it would only be 3.2, because we have a half a year. So as you can see already, we're looking a little better. The next sheet is the expenditure. So at the end of five years, we are at $8 million, and we factor in $30 million of expenses for Crystal River High, Floral City, Inverness Middle, Inverness Primary. Because if we're gonna bond, if we're gonna borrow out the 30 million, we have to use it for projects that we have listed. And we also have to add in our bond, or our payment for the debt service, whether we bond it or we do a bank loan for that 30 million.
Now, so you're proposing the $30 million bond in order to pay for these additional projects?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Typically, in that scenario, the $30 million, you would use your sales tax revenue as essentially your, what you're bonding against, those revenues coming in, to be able to start funding some of these facility upgrades, IPS, IMS, Floral City, Crystal River High School. If not, you're gonna have to wait as you collect the money over the years, because you get about $6.4 million a year in revenues. You have to wait to collect all that money over several years to be able to do any of those projects, because typically, you gotta have the money in hand before you can do the contract. So that was the, that was the scenario here, that you're looking at potentially bonding against your sales tax for a new 30 million, either on public issuance or a bank loan, and then paying back the debt service over 10 years. And the 30 million had good coverage, it was about 1.9, which is, you know, typically about an A-rated type of financing. We looked at 40 million, and that dropped down to about 1.3 coverage, which is not as good, because on the sales tax revenue, they wanna make sure you have plenty of revenue to cover the debt service. So at 1.9, essentially, you got a dollar ninety for every dollar. So that's, that's a good coverage as opposed to 1.3, which is on a lower scale. So that's why we chose to just do the scenario of the 30 million, where you have a better rating, better interest rates on those, on that type of financing. It allows you to do your work in the timeframe that you need to work in.
When does Crystal River High School finish paying?
2026, yeah. And remember, that was the, if you go back in time, we probably should have mentioned it here, that that was really the first sign that we were having to do some financing out there, because we used to do pay-as-you-go. We had enough money to be able to pay to build new schools early. And that was the first scenario that we had to actually go out on the street, bond money for the financing, for the 35 million for the high school, and 12 million for the primary school. Now, we got, I mean, the great interest rate on the 35 million, the high school is less than 1% due to the American Reinvestment Recovery Act. So that was a great opportunity for us, and we took advantage of it and it's still paying off today.
And board members, one thing that if you go through, back through, even where we are at this moment in the conversation, I would just remind us, if we started getting, and I don't know, oh, yeah, Mr. Dixon's in the audience, if we started having a very strong, consistent increase in students and student stations, I'm not talking about what we're having now, which is manageable, but if we now start, you know, have more, now we've got also, it's not even in this, any of this, we've got the Pinebridge Elementary School issue, and it's still like sitting out there. And it would mean that, you know, now, I would love to have the problem that we, we had, the voters have approved a half a penny, and we're having to decide what projects we will and will not do. I hope that is our challenge. My concern is, if the voters don't approve it, we're still having those issues that will affect us. And we have no state or local other revenues coming in to meet those mandates that we're gonna have.
That's correct.
I'm glad you reminded us about students coming from other counties. We get the state financing, but we, act of law and stays with the county that they live in. We don't get any of that. No. It's scary.
Do you have questions on the financing piece and how it affects?
So basically, if we do a pay-as-you-go, we're gonna have to just wait to do anything till we, till we've basically generated enough to do things.
Yeah, five years or, you know, depending on what that number is, if you, say in two years, you collect 12 million, you can do Floral City, so that would be another 12. Then you gotta wait another, you know, two more years past that to do IMS, so that's how it would affect you.
And unfortunately, as we know, we are, I'm trying to think, MGT, the initial study was done in '08, '09?
'07.
'07, wow. And we updated, I think, about 2012? It's not gonna get better, no. Those needs aren't gonna, you know, improve between now and then. So if we're waiting even more, if we didn't consider a bond option, and I know, am I correct, we're not making a bond decisioning at this moment, we're talking about what scenarios we would do, and that would be something we would approach potentially if the voters had approved that, that's when we would start that plan. So we're either gonna be making those decisions, or we're gonna be deciding where we're gonna have to cut substantially to get to $7.3 million a year.
Right, I want to just point out, because you brought it up, we did this in '07. We have followed a very detailed, thought-out plan, and the board has led the direction of that plan to keep it up with our facility. It hasn't been a, come in here in June and July and on the wind, come up with a project and go do it. If you look at that MGT assessment, it was done through the school district, the district followed that, and then they came back and reevaluated, made adjustments, refocused, stayed on the same direction, and we've stayed on the same path. That has been the driving force in how we've spent our capital dollars in keeping up with our buildings. Our maintenance department can tell you to the day how old our roofs are, how old our air conditions are across the district, when they need to be replaced, what needs to happen to them. We've done the same thing with our buses. So we, it's not just a shotgun approach or an ad hoc approach to how we're keeping up with this. We've had a very detailed, organized, systematic approach to using our capital dollars buys, and it's all been done in the public.
So you're saying we've studied this?
Absolutely.
You're saying we hired consultants to help us work through this?
The one consultant that we did use was MGT, and I think we got a big bang for our buck there.
Very big.
Very, it was not a very expensive consultant, but it was an outside set of eyes coming in to look at the project, retired architects, engineers, school personnel, and it was a very systematic approach that worked with our staff. We put a lot of time into that, Alan Burkhoff, Nick Delambo, John Calas, Scott Wagner, we put a lot of hours with, working with them to come up with that assessment, and we use that on an ongoing basis every year to try to update what needs to be done and what we do.
And that's what I think is important, even with 2012, I know, because I served at that point, I served on that committee, MGT was quite impressed that not only were we following a plan as a district, but that, that our internal staff was maintaining, updating that plan and keeping that, so that they really came in and, you know, and said, okay, let's, what direction do we need to continue to go? And I think to a large extension, extent, it was stick with the plan. It's working, it is doing what your, your district needs, and I would say that to a large extent, we need to stick with the plan.
Jared, there's a point where I'm just curious, on our time schedule now, are we gonna be able to break for lunch, or where, how do you foresee this going? It's 10 after 1:00.
And I thought, I was hoping we would just go straight through. Any thoughts? I'm assuming we just go straight through.
I, I think. We've got a lot of discussion yet, I, I don't know, I mean, I would prefer to do something eats at some point. I mean, I, I don't know, you think we're gonna be able to finish this by two o'clock?
Well, I only have, I think, maybe even ten more slides. Just depends on how long we need to discussing everything.
Well, we need to have discussion.
Right, yeah. And then.
I've got a little brush, but.
It's very important. Like, where's, how about you? But how long do you think?
We still, we still have one item on the agenda.
Right. So the discussion needs to be, feel, take how long?
Yes, and we still have a lot of questions in regards to how to do resolution.
So we're talking less than thirty minutes? Even with the, the one other item on the agenda? So, does that work for you, or if it doesn't? Now, you say you need to get something eat, because you're, you're like alive yet.
I'd like to have some more discussion myself, but I mean, I don't wanna be sitting here another hour or so and us pushing it further, I mean, I, I, but you're the chairperson, so.
Well, no, no, if someone on the board needs to go and get lunch, then, then we need to, let, do something so you can get lunch. If you feel like eating last half an hour, push ahead, so.
Well, I mean, I think if we could finish this portion of it and see.
Sort of see where you are. Okay, look, that's a good, good suggestion, let's go and do that, and then we'll make a decision.
So we move forward to the next five years of two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-six. This is with the surtax and paying back. At this point, we would be paying back the, the public issuance or the bank loan, whichever way we end up going if we go that way. And the bottom line is, in two thousand twenty-six, we would be at eight point two million dollars. In the good.
Thank you.
I like that fun balance, I do like that one, do you like?
So with our bond payment of thirty, the additional thirty million dollars that we're proposing, we already have the Christopher High School bond project, and we paid well over three million dollars a year.
Yes, sir.
What were our bond payments be on the new thirty million?
Approximately three point two five.
Okay, so.
And that's at the bottom, if you look at the bottom line on this, this slide right here, there's the, the debt service with the final payment in two thousand twenty-six.
Which would be about the same time.
About the same time, right.
Where's the, and show me where the debt service is there on Christopher High School. I see the surtax debt.
The Christopher High School would be the first line, the bond came in at the top. The top of the page, and then the new one is at the bottom of the page. Yes, yes.
And tell me again, what is the phase three projection on Christopher High School?
Um, seven to ten million.
That was.
The cost.
At one time, that was supposed to include a new gym, renovation of the arts area, which was the chorus, the band room, the.
I thought we were building a new chorus and band room.
All, all of that was supposed to be redone, renovated. Well, it's part of the cafeteria building, so it was supposed to be all over there. But the project never got that far because we were out of, so we stopped at the end of phase two. We did some remedial work on the gym in order to sustain it. We did some paintings and general work on those rooms in order to increase their educational suitability that they were ever going to do. That wing outside of the cafeteria, if you build that section, that was primarily what we wanted.
So the thirty million dollars, now again, that's something we haven't had a lot of discussion on. Okay, so I'm, you know, that's a pretty big chunk of money. I mean, you're, you're estimating some costs, that we don't really know how closely that is, you know. But my thoughts are, you know, we need to look at all the options. I mean, is ten years the way to go? Will our public vote for ten years? Should we be looking at an eight-year? You know, should, should we be changing some of our figures, what's the other option? You know, and so when I, I just wanna make sure, as we look at these figures, you know, there's been a lot of hard evidence presented here that's very good, and then there's some huge estimates. And the, the thirty million dollars is kinda caught me off guard a little bit. I mean, I know that, you know, we want to, like Mr. Blocker said, we wanna be able to go into projects now and not have to wait as, do this pay as you go. But I just, I, I'm not sure if we should be bonding thirty million dollars. Maybe we should be bonding less. So instead of, when we go to the public, if we take out thirty million dollars, well, I guess we're gonna be starting four major projects in a year or two's time, wouldn't we? I mean, is that something the district can handle? I mean, should we be having a, a timeline for this? And we're borrowing thirty million, but we may not even wanna start a Christopher High School phase three for five years. So, you know, where's our options with that?
I think this is just one scenario, one assumption. If you're hoping to say, this is how the impact would be to the capital fund if you did a, a sales tax for ten years, and if you bonded thirty million to help out with these projects. If you get to the point where the sales tax passes, and that's what we're certainly hoping and anticipating for, then we can look at all different types of scenarios as to how you wish, if you choose to even bond against it, you may not want to, you may wanna do pay as you go. I'm just saying, if you do pay as you go, it's gonna take you a lot longer to finish all those projects.
Right.
You do bring up a good point. Do we have enough staff to, to be able to manage multiple big projects at once? That's a question to have. But I think those are all types of conversations that, once it passes, those will be good conversations to have. This is just a scenario to say, if you did this, if you decided to do this, can your budget sustain it? And I think this scenario shows that you can. When we look at doing forty million, it showed that you couldn't.
Right.
So that was just, you can do twenty, we can run the numbers on twenty, you just have, you have that much less upfront money to be able to do these jobs with. And I know we wanna do as much as we can and as fast as we can. You know, with those three particular IPS, IMS, and Floral City, those came up. But we also need to complete Christopher High School, because that's kinda how we got into the scenario of IMS, we never really completed that, that upgrade over there. So it's just an option, it's just a scenario to be able to discuss. It's not saying this is what's set in stone, but it's just some assumptions we made.
And so for us, you know, as we decide to, you know, as we decide to move forward, we gotta be careful though that we don't mislead people to believe that, you know, this is right around the corner. You know, I mean, we throw Christopher High School phase three in the mix, which I think we need to talk about, you know, for sure, because that was never completed. But yet, we don't wanna mislead people to believe that this is gonna happen quickly, even if we bond the, bond the money. So I'm just pointing that out because I think that we wanna garner public support. We have to state our case, and that's what you're doing, is you're stating some facts that we can bring to people. But on the other hand, we're gonna have to be cautious that we don't present a picture that is not realistic in some ways.
Well, and I think that all goes out to communication. Correct, we have to communicate it to the, to the, to the public to ensure then that we're gonna spend these dollars wisely and what we say we're gonna spend on. Now, the timeframe may be four or five years before this project is completely complete, or three years, whatever that number may be. But I think as long as it's properly communicated, then they can see that we're actually spending their money as we told.
I think it's really, real important, because I know people say they support the school system, they support the, the point five tax. Because we do what we say we're going to do, we say we're gonna build a new elementary school. We do not build a high school. We do what we say we're gonna do.
The other thing though, that we're, that this board's, I think we have to look at, and I, and I don't disagree with Mr. Dodd as far as, you know, whether we're doing thirty million, whether we're paying as you're going. But, but there's three parts to this in the presentations, or at least there's three that identify to me. The first is, if nothing changes, where are we five years from now? Or, and as we've noticed, it's really not five years from now, it's, it's two and a half years from now. So where, so if nothing else happens, where we will be? That's one of the things we have to, we have to both understand as a board and ultimately communicate, should the board decide to, to move forward. The second piece is, regardless of whether we didn't do any of the MGT work whatsoever. And, and so I say that because we could approach that, what we're going to do, on a lot of different ways. It may be a combination of, let's say Floral City, IPS, and, and next it could be a combination of the middle school and the high school. I mean, we may be looking at that a lot of different ways, and I'm assuming what, part of what we'll be doing in that determination is looking at those critical needs of that MGT study and updating that. Because I don't think any of us would disagree. We have probably the most significant needs in Floral City and IPS before we have some other significant needs in doing our MGT study. So, but if we didn't do any of that, between technology and the lack of, of capital funding over the next, not just five years, but ten years, how is this district going to fund that? Irrespective of whether we did any of those improvements or whether we even have to build another school? Because, you know, for example, I know that we're saying twenty-six million in technology. Some of that we have, we have budgeted in the next five years. A substantial part of that is, Dr. Gettys has shared with us, as, as our executive staff shared, it's not funded. We will have to pull that out. So that's, that piece alone is something that is a classroom effective capital expense that will, will have to somehow go away. We talked about just the bond issue and the maintenance. You know, we're talking about seven million dollars probably conservatively. That we have, whether we, you know, whether that's five years from now, whether we do a thirty-year bond, a twenty-year bond, however we do that, that is still a factor we're going to have. And that's still not taking into consideration the things of the buses and some of these other expenses that we have forecasted for that we do not have in our capital funding right now. So I, I think realistically, we have to be appropriate to say, if we have that thirty million, or if we have the, the funds to, to do those projects, those are gonna be about still making some hard decisions. Because in some cases, it may be, okay, Dr. Gettys, we know where we're going for the next three years. I don't know how our refreshing's gonna happen, because we also have Floral City that we're gonna have to do at that same time. If we do pay as you go, then we're gonna have to, you know, reconsider that. I will say, I think, pay as you go would, would necessitate extending out to a ten-year almost instantly. I don't think you could do a pay as you go and plan on that being something, because you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to build up that money just to do that. And by the time you've built up the money, five years is over if you did a five-year tax. And basically, you're probably gonna be then, we're sitting there saying, well, we're not gonna be able to do that, even though we collected for it, because now we have these other needs. Because we waited this pay as you go. So those are, I, I would agree that, that what Mr. Blocker's trying to advise us, that's, those are gonna be decisions that in part, we're gonna have to manage, assuming that the, that the taxpayers pay this, or approve this. I stand back on that I think why we need to consider going to them is the fact that we have no funding moral change any time in the foreseeable future. And we have had a state legislature, as well as frankly, a local commission that has said, we're not interested in, in exchanging our philosophy on impact fees. So any impact fee fundable project we could look at, we can't count on. And, and no matter, clearly, whatever we say, if they have a majority of people over there that believe that, unless the voters change that, that's just the reality we're gonna be living. The, I don't foreseeably see that the legislature is going to give us back up to two mills. I mean, that's, I think we were advised that this last legislative session.
The STAMP Act was temporary.
It very much. And you add to that that the PICO dollars, anything that we've gotten, they've given as much to the charter school movement. And I would remind those listening, that means above the PICO dollars, ninety percent of the money is going to ten percent of the students when it comes to PICO dollars. So we can't count on that money changing. So it is, at this point, only on the AdAlorm taxpayers.
If I may add one additional comment, just remember, the last couple of years during the session, that's gonna continue, is they're trying to allow charter schools to get a piece of your capital out of the village. There's a potential that one point five may not be all yours.
Oh, I think that's a very, I think we can pretty much put on notice that's gonna happen.
So if that's gonna go, some of that will go to the charter school.
And I, I'm sure you all have read it too. The legislature's already said, they are not done with open enrollment. As far as they're concerned, the things that we've been looking at that we may be trying to do to control open enrollment, they've already pretty much said, next session, if they start seeing it, they're gonna start opening it up even more. So, well, I just, how do we address this?
Oh, yeah, very good point.
And I, and I don't disagree with, by the way, your, what you're.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, I agree, I think with everything you said, Mr. Kennedy, I mean, as far as these are the issues, that we gotta be able to communicate, and, and this is the reality of it. You know, sometimes I hear rainy day fund, I'm like, well, there's a storm right on the coast. The rain's here, the rain's coming, but it's not a rainy day fund at all. But I'm just saying that, I don't know if I feel real comfortable, I mean, this is a scenario for the thirty million. It may not be what I think, you know, and this board may decide, well, we may bond a project this year, and it may not be thirty million, it may be fifteen million, and maybe we'll wait. You know, that's still an option that we'll have.
Exactly.
Right, so that's something that.
We don't have to make that decision, so.
No, we don't, we don't.
We don't have any money.
The only thing we have. The only thing is that we have to be clear on how we communicate that we're not promising projects to schools or bond amounts. I mean, those are things we'll, we'll cross, hopefully, we'll be able to cross that bridge, because we're near to it. Right, hopefully, we'll get to that bridge. So that we'll have that opportunity to make that decision, so.
We acknowledge what you said about having the staff to do projects. We can't, we couldn't go out there tomorrow, our current staff, and start all of those projects and manage all those at the same time. So there has to be, again, a plan, we've, we've done that in the past, where we will plan accordingly, and we'll have those projects at different phases, and we'll have people monitoring it. So those things, we are experienced with, right, being able to do that.
But if we don't ask the voters, and if the voters don't approve, and even if we ask them and they don't approve.
Right.
We, we, I, I believe very, very strongly, we might as well halt anything and everything that we're having discussions of Floral City, IPS, and, and the middle school, because I, it's not even a consideration at that point.
That's right.
So I, that's where I, I believe I'm at, I'm at. One way, we have the potential, the other way, we have no, it's, it's done.
And the sad thing is, we'll probably have to halt even things that we were planning for, like some of the technology.
Absolutely, oh, I, completely.
Yeah.
Completely. Dr. Gettys and I have talked about that, to say, we can't, we can't do it.
All right, if we compare our, our options of levying the taxes and not, or the surtax and not doing it, our revenues for the next ten years are about one hundred and forty-nine point seven million dollars, whereas if we levy the surtax, it's two hundred and thirty-seven point four million. That's with the thirty million financing in there. And then our ending fund balances, you can see the drastic difference, I mean, that's twenty-eight million dollars. So it's just kinda to sum it all up. This is the financing scenario of the difference between a bank loan and a public issuance, and this is not up for decision today, but this is just to give you some preliminary numbers where we got the debt service from.
At the end of two thousand twenty-six, how much more bond payments will we have on the estimate made on the thirty million dollars?
None.
So.
Ten years.
It's ten years.
It's a ten-year bond, thirty million. So when this, if we were to ask for a sales tax revenue for ten years, that, the, all our bonds would be paid off, right? I mean, our third, our, our, one finishes in two thousand twenty-seven, or two thousand twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, and this.
That would be paid off and the, the initial.
Depending on what you do, whether we have like a half a year, you know, timing.
But we're not, we're not talking about any significant bond payments, because, okay.
It wouldn't go beyond December of the next year.
You would only issue findings and everything else.
Right.
So across Florida, if we look at the schools that have a surtax, there are 16 districts, and these are the ones that currently have imposed or extended levies. Escambia and Monroe are on their second extended levy, just so you know. And St. Lucy and Santa Rosa are both on 20 years of surtax levy.
Oh, my gosh.
Just to give you some statistics. So there's 17 counties here, and then there are also six counties that share a 1% with their local government at this time. So 23 Florida counties levy a surtax for their school capital outlay.
17 here is the amount that has just school capital outlay, and six is.
They share it. Yes, sir.
It's 1% they share it, a half.
Yes, half.
But that's not all of the counties that have sales tax.
No, those are just the ones with the schools.
That have the sales tax.
Yes, sir.
Because if we, if we talk about going to other counties to shop, I mean, there's a lot of counties that have a 7% sales tax. I may not be going to schools, but what I pay is 7%.
Correct.
So if I go to, I mean, I put, if I go to Pasco County, it's 7%.
Yes.
Like, like in Pasco, they should, counties, which are.
That's what I was just trying to pull up.
I mean, I pull up the surrounding counties in our area, so I mean, I, you know, did a little bit of homework on that. Marion, now, I'm showing a 6%. I thought someone said.
They are, but what they have is, they have a 1 mil capital for schools.
Right.
So instead of collecting one and a half, they have two and a half mills. They did, by the way, have at one time a sales tax. I don't necessarily think it was for schools, but I know they sunsetted it.
So your counties, the Hoover counties, they have sales tax, where they're going to close to the states.
Right.
And stuff like that. But they could have assumed that's going to be.
Interestingly, when on the, on the state side, it appears that there are only nine counties in the state that don't have some form of sales tax or surtax. Marion County being one of them, which is interesting, because again, they, they are funding it through a different model. But Citrus is one of the few, you know, where, that has nothing, that is doing that. You know, we have, I think we as elected officials have tried very hard to manage these resources, as we've talked about, of the reduction, so that we did not have to go to any more extent to ask the adult taxpayers or even sales taxpayers. But at some point now, we've got to ask.
You know, I was, it was interesting for me, I saw on the research at the Florida Department of Revenue, that Levy County is 7% sales tax. And Dixie County, this county's north of us, 7% sales tax. You know, and then you go to the other side, you know, Pasco's 7, Lake County's 7, Pinellas and Hillsborough are both 7%. Seminole's 7, Osceola's 7%. We're not, I mean, we're looking at half, so we're looking at 6.5. You know, you have Orange County, I showed on my research, was 6.5%. But I think there's a lot of other taxes associated with Orange County.
Looking at here.
Already, yeah. So, you know, but it was interesting to me, because I didn't figure that Levy or Dixie would be, would have additional sales tax, but they both do.
Dixie has a, they're seven.
Seven.
And maybe because, you know, it's not, maybe probably going to be, you know, three of the tensions in the public body.
Yep. But I think it's important that we point that out, because when I go to shop, if I do go to Brooksville, or if I, we, you know, go out to eat somewhere, you know, I'm paying that, that extra sales tax that benefits that county. Benefits them. When those people come to Citrus County, we don't get that trade-off. We don't, you know, we don't capture anything, you know, from those people who live outside the county, who may come to visit or may come to do business here. You know, there's not that equality in sales tax.
You sound like an attorney.
Okay. Okay, I guess I'm going to go over this one. To take this to the August primary election, the resolution would have to be forwarded to the Board of Accounting Commissioners by May 26, which is in two days. And the language would have to be submitted to the supervisor of elections by June 24, a month from today. If we want to take it to the November general election, the language would need to be submitted to the supervisor of elections by August 1st.
I want August.
Mr. Gibson, will it be the benefits of, to everyone, for the two, the August or the November?
We do the work plan in July, so it would be good to have the information when we complete the work plan. So in that case, it would be the earlier the better. The other reason possibly for having it sooner would be there would be less on the ballot, and then people would be there specifically to vote for that. It wouldn't be a confused, confusion issue. You'd specifically have that on the ballot, and people would know that that's what it's about.
We know that placement on a ballot is critical.
Yes.
And I believe this is an important enough issue that putting it in the primary would really be able to highlight it and people to know. I don't think that they can wonder whether, because in November, there's going to be a lot of state amendments that are, that are in there, and there's going to be other questions that are asked.
Well, there's going to be one, the presidential thing.
And there's going to be that thing. So to me, I think that a primary election highlights it and gives it, to me, the proper importance that it has in this community.
That would also give us an opportunity, when we approved the final budget in September, we would know whether or not we would be able to start levying this in January. So we could incorporate that into our final budget approval in September.
I mean, that's, my thoughts go towards the primary, because it can't be more of a focal issue for our voters to get out, and they would, you know, I think time-wise, it could be, it could help too for the process. Of course, we have to run pretty fast and pretty hard because of our time constraints, but it has to. And I, Mr. Dodd, I think you're 100% correct. I think there's, there's every, and if we need to do that, we can educate them. But if not, then we're going to need to start making other plans. And I'm saying, that would allow this board to then, as we go through that budget cycle, you can then start planning, because the other thing is, I think we're going to have to start having some discussions to say, okay, we can fund it this year, and we might be able to next year. But we're going to have to have a real conversation.
I move to approve the resolution for holding referendum election on the August 2016 ballot.
Second.
And which one of y'all approved? Mr. Gradgras, is it, we have two here?
No, just one.
Oh, then, okay.
And also for a period of 10 years.
Okay.
Is that, do you have to make it as part of your?
10 years.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, I took it as it. It's just.
10 years.
Approve the resolution to do the 1/1/16 surtax for the August 30, 2016 primary election.
Did you say term 20 years?
I meant 10.
10.
That's okay.
I like 20.
So can we just, can we, and I did second it, but can we just, just for clarification for the public, so that we have a clarification as to the motion again?
And I'm going to ask Mr. Gradgras to repeat what you just said, because I didn't catch all of the other motions. Correct.
It would be a resolution ordering provided for the holding of a referendum election on August 30, 2016, for the voters to approve the 1/1/16 surtax on a period of 10 years.
Okay, that was submitted by Mr. Gradgras, by Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, we've been pretty apparent in the PowerPoint presentation of where, what our desires are. But, you know, I think, in my view personally, that, you know, we're doing the right thing for our children, recognizing the need that's out there, three to five years out there. You know, we present it to the public, we recommend a course of action, and then we ask the citizens to decide at what level they want to fund public education. And, you know, I do not like raising taxes, but really what we're doing is, we're allowing the people to see the need and to, hopefully, if we can present it and communicate it in the way that we've learned, what we know here, that people realize, I mean, this is our future. And, you know, we heard all these speakers that came up and talked about, you know, continuing to do the best, and knowledge is power, and all these different things that they, you know, we don't want to lose what we've built, what we have. And so that's the same way I feel, as I think we all feel here, but, you know, we owe it to our children, provide a quality education. We owe it to our teachers to have classrooms and technology that is conducive to learning. We owe it to our parents. And I hope that we can convince the voters of Citrus County that this is the right thing for our children and for our future, and for their future. Because, you know, as we all, you know, get older and the new generation comes, and, you know, that's the cycle that goes on, and we want to provide that environment for our students that's a quality one. And, you know, I do agree that, you know, I appreciate the work of the staff, Mr. Mullin, and all that you guys have done and put into this, because it has been relatively quickly. You know, there's been a lot of information gathered, but, you know, I hope that the public, I hope that we can communicate the need. I hope the public sees the need, and then if not, we're going to have, we're going to have as much, if not more work to do on making cuts. And I think people need to know that, too. I think people, you know, we need to put our parents of students and employees on notice. That's where we're at.
And Mr. Dodd, I'd just like to follow, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say that I had requested from Mr. Mullin and Mr. Bishop and whoever else, a list of talking points, so that we're all saying the same thing.
So we cover all topics?
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy. I just, I, I wanted to just echo Mr. Dodd, and, you know, first, I also just have to have a little emotional moment to say, God, it's great serving with you guys. We make decisions that we don't always agree, every single minute detail, but the single solitary thing this board agrees with is, we're going to do what's right for kids. And I am grateful to serve with you all. I also am grateful to say, we're not levying the tax. We are asking the community for their help with our kids. That's what we're asking for. And I have great faith in this community. This community shows it every year, whether it's our graduations, whether it's our scholarships. And I have great faith that we will educate them in a way that is critical to that future. I don't think we could have much more information than what we have to be able to, at the moment, make the decision we are. But I hope we have to be making some good, hard decisions after this, because like Mr. Dodd has shared, we could be making some really good, tough decisions, or we may be having to make some really hard, terrible decisions. And so I look forward to voting.
Thanks so much. Any other? How in favor?
I.
Opposed? Carrie Swarzera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what y'all did, there is the public continually says that we do what we said we're going to do, and we have the information, we're totally transparent, totally transparent. Next, Mr. Mullin.
Mr. Mullins will come forward, answer any questions you may have about the dual agreement, or dual enrollment agreement, articulation agreement between the school district and Central Florida College.
Now, I'm chair, I just want to say too, I think this may be our last time having this.
One more time.
You are going to, oh, then I won't say it. Then I'm not going to say it. Because I don't want to say it to begin with.
I'll just briefly highlight some of the changes from this year to last year, from last year to this year. There are very, very few, and I'll also give you some basic information about dual enrollment. This year, tuition-wise, during first semester, the fall semester, we had 157 students taking dual enrollment classes. We had 924 billable hours, and by that, I mean, those that we have to pay CF for, 285 non-villable hours, the difference being, the non-villable are those that we have on our campus. So during fall semester, we had $66,509.52 we paid in tuition to CF. During the spring semester, as usual, we have many more students. We had 205 students who had 1,239 billable hours and 276 non-villable hours, with a spring total of $89,183.22 of tuition that we're paying. To date, or as of the end of April, we have spent $47,979.65 on textbooks and access codes for the college students. I mentioned access codes, as Dr. Gettys was talking about, with textbooks, a lot of those are digital. At the college, you buy an access code for the students. That is good for one semester and one semester only. Very convenient. However, in the case of ENC 1101 and 1102, which is college English, as well as some of the beginning math classes, we have found a source other than buying them at the college bookstore, and we have worked to make sure that we get the lowest possible cost for those. So we've kind of reduced some of our own costs as best that we can. The changes in the actual agreement, you'll notice that instead of having it saying the articulation agreement for dual enrollment remediation acceleration, or acceleration, college and career pathways and teacher preparation, we shortened it this year to the articulation agreement for college and career acceleration, because that was a title that we could, but we still have all of those things in there. There were very few changes, other than the people that worked on the agreement together. And the places in the agreement where it said the dual enrollment specialist, they have renamed her title to dual enrollment coordinator, so we have that. We're working with CF on some different things, and those will be coming, on how we're doing registration, to try to get more advisement to our students. That is being reflected. Couple things that the legislature has done in the last couple of years is taking out, taken out developmental ed courses, and we had that mentioned in a couple of places in our agreement, so we removed that. Also, we were required to give the PERT up until this year, and then had to put students in for remediation at the high school level, and that is no longer, so we've removed that from the dual enrollment agreement.
Does the kids don't have to take the PERT anymore for next year?
They have to take the PERT if they're trying to get in dual enrollment. to get into dual enrollment. But we were required to give the PERT to every junior to make sure as a gauge of college readiness. And then if they did not measure college readiness, then we were required to put them in English for college readiness or math for college readiness, et cetera.
Okay.
So we had that language in here because we work with CF with those to make sure that they were preparing those for the college, but they took PERT out and they took PERT out of the funding formula for us to give the PERT. Now, we still have the PERT, we still give the PERT, the college still gives the PERT, but it's not to every single student, whether they're college bound or not. Also, one of the other changes was that CF, we had a blurb, so to speak, in the agreement about academies and cohorts of students that if we wanted to pull aside a group and have that as just a group of students who went through like we did several years ago at WTI. Basically, because of the SACS accreditation issue at the college, we no longer can do that, so we took that out of the agreement as well. But those are the only changes in the agreement as of what we had last year.
May I have the motion to approve?
I move to approve the new articulation agreement between College of Central Florida and Central County School Board.
Second. It's going to be that Mr. Kennedy said by Mr. Doughton to approve the articulation agreement for dual enrollment remediation, career pathways, and teacher preparation between the district board and trustees of the college and Central Florida and Central County School.
Just one thing, and I know Ms. Nobles, first of all, this is just another example of how Ms. Nobles always is working with us. I have a student situation that I'll just, I can't generally, but I want to talk to you about what I, maybe as we move forward with CF. And Ms. Stanley will be in that role, and Mr. Rollin will probably be in that role. And I've talked to Mr. Mullin about this. The setup is, I have several of my kids that, in swimming, they're also homeschools kids. And so they're in dual enrollment, but they're in middle school. And the reason that they can do dual enrollment is the statute now permits, if you're a private school student or a homeschool student, if you're in the sixth grade and you created and you've completed four credits in high school and you've passed PERT at the required score, then you can go into dual enrollment. We don't do that. Now, when I say we, the articulation agreement between Citrus County and CF parallels or mirrors that of Levy County and Marion County, if I recall. So we basically, we're all on the same pages in those three counties. But there's concerns that, and I think they're appropriate, to say, we want students to be successful in dual enrollment. So that's why some of the requirements that are in the articulation agreement are there so that we ensure that students are going to be, you know, have a positive academic result in dual enrollment. Because for them, it's, what they may not know is that's going to be a score they're going to live with in college, whether they like it or not. Am I saying it, am I correct so far?
You are correct in that a, you cannot forgive or get rid of something from the college. Each year I go to the state admission workshop, and one of the requirements, one of the things that they hammer to us every year is tell your students that whatever grade they ever make in dual enrollment is with them for the rest of their life. And so just to share something, I've got a little bit more data for you. You know me.
Of course.
This past year, we began dual enrollment as we always have, but we, of course, did not have FSA scores. We did not have the ability to get the score for them. So CF was trying to help us because they knew what issues that we were having. And so they allowed us, just with the students who had the courses, but not necessarily the Algebra I, ELC, and the 10th grade English, to go ahead and to go into CF. I will tell you, I just finished the dual enrollment bill, and our Ds and Fs that students have made in dual enrollment, as well as the number of withdrawals, are up close to 400% higher than they were previous.
Is that our district or is that just their?
No, ma'am. No, sir. That is our district. That is the bill that's lying on my desk right now.
So that brings up, so here's the, the struggle we're under. We're often having to tell parents, well, our articulation agreement doesn't permit you to be in dual enrollment unless it meets all of the requirements within the articulation agreement. And I won't right now go through the boards with all that. But there are some circumstances at times where, and I know Ms. Bryant will recall this as a grandmother, where maybe, maybe there should be some consideration that a student is appropriate. Maybe they're a ninth grader and, and then rather than acceleration of, say, AP Calculus, they want to take a dual enrollment option of, help me out, Ms. Nobles, thank you, any of those, good work, thank you. So they score very high on the math PERT, but they haven't completed their FSA. And, and we're concerned about that, and Ms. Nobles will, will share, because we have remediation issues, we have other issues that we may be dealing with. But we could even say as a district, we're okay with it, if the college is okay with it. The college may not be okay with it, is the problem. So my suggestion, though, is, is this, that I would, I would, you know, like the board to at least explore, considering that next year, as the articulation agreement is discussed, that maybe that, that conversation gets more opened up to say, if we are having some flexibility for our homeschool students and our private school students, that maybe we should have some flexibility for our public school students to have some of those options. Because I know of a student right now that probably could benefit by being able to take that. I'm sure there's more than one. But our hands are tied. It doesn't matter what we, if we even wanted to, to release the rules ourselves, we don't have that discretion.
Well, one of the biggest concerns is, is we often hear, well, my student is gifted in a particular area. In other words, they're gifted in math. Why should English hold them back? Or vice versa, or whatever else. You've got to realize that when CF admits a student, they admit the whole student. So you cannot just admit a student to take just math courses or just English courses. It's, they admit the whole student. And I'll, I'll draw on my Cypress Creek abilities as well. That's one of the things that when they admit a Cypress Creek student to take online courses, they are not just limiting those students to online courses. When they get out of Cypress Creek and they want to go to on campus, they can go on campus. So you're not admitted just for a, a particular area. And so, like I said, that's one of the things that we often hear, well, why can't they just take that? You know, it's not a whole lot to ask a student to get four credits in, in specific courses. And that's the idea behind it, is planning ahead so that they are able, with English I, English II, to be able to write to a certain level at college level. Back in the day, and I'll date myself as usual, it was always considered that dual enrollment was after a student had exhausted all of the possibilities at the high school. And somehow we've gotten past, we forgot that high school does have things to offer our students that do not have long-term effects on the student. I would much rather see, and I, if it was my daughter, I would tell her, I would rather you take English I, then maybe even an AP English class, because that's not going to have a long-term effect on you, then go and take dual enrollment. Because that way, you're not going to have that long-term effect. You know, and I've talked to many a parent that says, well, my child can make a C in dual enrollment. I will tell you, a C in dual enrollment is not an advisable thing to do because that's the lowest passing grade at the college. And so if you just went skating through with a bunch of Cs at dual enrollment, and then you plan on transferring on to a higher program, what have you done? You basically are at a two-point GPA, and they're looking at 3.5 or 3 at a minimum to get into the upper division courses. So that's a piece of it, too. And like I said, we're not trying to limit, but we're trying to make sure that a student is prepared. And that's, that's our, our biggest goal.
And I, I don't disagree with that. Unfortunately, there's a lot of things within the guidance that the state, I mean, the state permits them to take as many Florida Virtual courses as they want. And we would, I think, advise them not to do that. But they can do that. The challenge that we have is that if, again, there's a segment of students that the college lets in under a different set of criteria than what we do. I think, I have faith in our guidance counselors to help guide the students to make a, a good decision. I just, I would be encouraged to say that, I would just say that, at this point, the college is, is kind of putting it back on us and saying, well, the district's not doing it. It's a, it's joint decision that's articulated the, the things. I would like there to see there that there's some flexibility. And right now, there seems to be more hard lines, and that's really all. Because I, I don't disagree with one thing. I, I would not, I would probably not advise my child to do that under all of those circumstances. But there's going to be some, some parent that says, no, I want them to do that. And I don't want to necessarily be the one that is the obstacle in that. I would like to see, you know, them to have some of that. So if, you know, and it's not entirely a conversation for today, but I did want to make sure the board was aware, there's kind of this two thing going on, and the district's the one kind of stuck in the middle. Because we're the ones that sometimes are told, well, we can't do anything as the college because that's what the agreement is, and the district says you can't do it. But they are letting them in the other door to do it. And, and frankly, I don't know that one is right and the other wrong. I think sometimes there should be, there should be some, yeah, there's at least, there needs to be some balance, and I don't know that we have that right now. So be aware, and again, it's a, it's not a conversation. And I, again, thank you. I think you negotiated well, and these are tough times and...
Like I said, we've really made no changes on, on that piece of it. It was this year when we had no scores and we allowed student, they allowed students in. But as I said, you know, going from about seven or eight students failing or, or D and F up to 37 on this bill, yeah, 400% change. That's, that was significant. And, and like I said, withdrawal wise, usually it's maybe three or four. I was up to 14. So, because they knew that they just couldn't handle it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Mullin?
I don't think we can vote.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's really, yes, you always picture, all of that.
Aye.
Carrie, four zero, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Our mind, our voice did. You're quite the same.
I just want to fast out your scholarship impression from Mr. Simon, just, and I know it was mentioned earlier during the discussion about the local support. I think it's nice to point out that Citrus High School had 224,583 dollars in scholarships to our students from local, local sources. Crystal River High School, 212,000. La Canto High School, 624,797 dollars from local. So this is a total of 1,061,380. And then overall, you can see the scholarships that our students in Citrus County were earning, 3.3 million for Citrus High School, 3.7 million for Crystal River High, 4.2 million for La Canto High, for a total of 11.2 million dollars that our high school seniors, Citrus County, were able to obtain.
And those are monies that parents don't have to pay for the college.
Here, here.
It's quite an investment, quite a good return on the investment.
Don't you know how much, how expensive college is, when you could put 11.2 million dollars in there, it probably still doesn't cover everything for those kids.
Thank you very much. That's most impressive.
But it is, I was really impressed with the over a million dollars from local, local papers. I do think, I do think we have, we're fortunate to come from a community that does respect the school system, the students, and I think this is obvious.
Thank you.
The Goodfellas matter was appealed from the Circuit Court. The Circuit Court ruled in Goodfellas' favor. The county appealed it to the Fifth DCA. I have gone ahead and filed a motion to file another amicus curate brief in that matter because I was going to get time ordered, but I wanted to make you aware that I was doing that, just to make sure I had your permission to go ahead and do that. The Circuit Court judge basically just said the county was wrong and they filed an appeal to the Fifth DCA, so.
Is there really a need to file the brief for the county?
Yes, because, yes, they're basically arguing the same things again. And now the Florida, whatever, the Florida League of Counties or whatever that, that is, they filed an amicus brief in the matter that I got.
Is their, their, because their association's members would be impacted by the decision?
Correct, although I don't, I, I think that they are expanding what their perception of the impact would be because I think they have a hard time distinguishing that the school district has home rule powers and it does not apply to all other governmental entities and private corporations. So, and when I read the petition for red that went up from, you know, to the Fifth DCA, they're, they're arguing how big of an impact this is going to have on, on every county as far as their, their flow control ordinances, but I think it's a narrowly drawn issue as it relates to school districts.
Mr. Redchow, is this something that could be headed to the State Supreme Court at the end? And I, and I, I can't dis, you know, I can't disagree with, from the county's perspective, their, you know, of what they're doing. They're, they're trying to protect their, their flow controls, so there's no disrespect in what they're, they're doing. But it looks like at some point, the way that the, the lower courts are going, they're going to have to go to the higher court or something.
Yeah, well, they are. They're at the Fifth DCA now. I mean, and I'm not, you know...
From there, does it go to?
I think there has to be certified as an issue of great public importance, or there has to be a conflict between jurisdictions, like the Fourth DCA and the Fifth DCA, which I don't think that there is at this point in time. If they may request the Supreme Court to look at it as being a matter of great, excuse me, Republican support for everything. So, as long as, as long as y'all are good with that. I'm already, like I said, I needed to protect the rights and go ahead and do it, so.
We're all okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Redchow.
So I just want to understand, I want to make sure we're all on the same page with the referendum that we, we voted on, and our direction to you is that you will have that from the county commission, I believe, by this Friday, correct?
Yes, I think, yes.
Because we cannot afford to have any errors in the process in order for us to have this on the August ballot.
I spoke to Ms. Lynn yesterday. She said that they had it by the end of the week, that that would be fine. I intend on having it back over here shortly for Ms. Powers to sign. I know y'all are meeting today for graduation at around 6:15. Like that, she can sign it. I'll have it signed in the spot that I need to sign, and Ms. Hill can sign it at that time, too, then I can get forwarded over to Ms. Lynn. I did talk to her yesterday. I think Mr. Dixon has whatever paperwork that needs to go along with it. I think Ms. Cheryl, I think the BSCC secretary or legal secretary had forwarded that information to you.
I spoke with Mr. Oliver yesterday, and he said all he needs is the referendum.
Okay.
I mean, this needs to be done. We don't know what the, their response, the county commission's response is going to be, but we know what our work is to do, and we need to make sure there's no technicalities that would hold up any thing that we have voted on here today. And so I want to make sure that's fairly clear. The other thing is, on this Exhibit B, on the referendum and on the wording, I think we need to talk about the wording of the referendum. It's in your Exhibit B, but the one part that I saw that I was concerned on is that it does not, it's, it gives the notice for the referendum, and unless I'm on Exhibit B, which I think is that second, which is the one we voted on, the non-committee one. But in the top of that, it does not have the, the, the time period not to exceed 10 years. In the official ballot version, it has... In the official ballot version, it has that. But in the top notice...
Wait till I get to the...
Yeah, I will. And then I'll just mention to the other, to the board members, too, that I know how Mrs. Powers is with grammar, and I kind of tend to go that way.
You didn't say what?
I kind of tend to go that way also, right? So, you know, I just, I know, Wes, you had a word count issue, or I guess you have an issue, we want to make it simple, what you presented here has been very simple, but... Very nice, it's a boy.
It's a boy! It's a boy!
Congratulations.
She has five daughters. It's a boy. Excuse me.
That excitement. So I just, it's, you know, there's a couple things. I mean, we say a one-half cent sales tax, you know, is there, you know, I don't want any confusion to be that, you know, this is a one, one-point-five, yeah. So I, is there, and I know you've probably got this from a lot of other referendums in other counties, but is, should we say, shall a half-cent sales tax? You know, we have, shall a one-half cent per dollar sales be levied for a period? I think it should say for a period, or for the period. We use a one-half cent sales tax, we should, should use a period. That's on the official ballot.
Oh, my God.
But what I was talking about was in the top part, Wes, it doesn't say the notice on the years.
Where, where are you talking about?
I'm talking about Exhibit B. I'm talking about Exhibit B on its pages of number.
Okay, so...
If you look at the top, and maybe, maybe I'm missing some other informa, maybe it's referenced somewhere else. But I just happened to catch that. You see on the top, on the notice, will be held, will be held on blank in the school district, Citrus County, for the purpose of determining whether or not the election approved the levy in Citrus County for a one-half cent per dollar sales surtax to finance. Well, in all the other places, it's, it would say the date, not to exceed ten years. But do you see where I'm seeing that?
That's fine. You need to reopen this up and make an admit, and make a new motion to amend the resolution that you just adopted.
Well...
You approve this resolution with, with the two modifications. That wasn't one of them.
Well, is this, is this a, this is a bad resolution then, Wes?
No, it's not. No, no, we just have to modify it for, for the legal purposes.
Okay, I mean, is that the, is that what you're going to present to the Board of County Commission? And so...
For one-half cent per dollar sales tax, and you will surtax, and you want it not to exceed ten years. And that, that top paragraph, on Exhibit B, where it says, notice is hereby given, you're wanting it to say, by the school board, by the Citrus School Board of a, of one-half cents per dollar sales tax in Citrus County, Florida, not to exceed ten years. Is that what you're wanting?
Well, what I'm wanting is that we don't get a technicality that would keep us from putting it on the ballot. And what I'm saying is, are you telling us that the, it's, that the way you have it worded in Exhibit B, there's nothing wrong with that? That's what goes to the county commission, isn't it?
No, this whole resolution goes to the county commission. That's the notice that gets published in the newspaper.
That's the notice that's published in the newspaper?
Correct. It has to be published, what is it, it's like, four weeks or five weeks out, it has to be published at least, and then another time, two weeks before the election, it has to be published in the newspaper.
Okay. But shouldn't we have it in there as far as the, the ten years? Should that be published?
Well, it's also published in the official ballot, which says not to exceed ten years.
Right. Is, so, and I guess, you know, this is something we haven't done, you know, is this something that, this whole, like, this whole thing gets published, even what the wording is in the ballot, or...
If you're going to insert the resolution in the middle right here, the whole resolution's going to go. This is a notice of referendum, that it's, this whole thing should go into the newspaper when you insert the form of the resolution in the middle there, the whole thing should go, I believe. I haven't done a sales tax referendum before.
But I think that's how, generally, that's how there's like information, and then there's the question.
Will the exhibits, like, does that have to be published, too? Does, I mean, like, the, the plan for the use, the...
Yes.
Because there's some, there's in B, in Exhibit A, B, it says specifically included are the following, it says C schedule of projects. So that will all be published?
Yes, that's the schedule I have right here. Which was given to me this, or last time.
Okay, so that schedule is going to be published in there as well?
Correct.
Okay, so what is it, will change it if we have an amendment? Wes, is it...
I mean, I guess what Mr. Dodd is asking is that in, on Exhibit B, in the first paragraph where it says, notice is hereby given, would y'all like for me to insert something in there that says for a period of not to exceed ten years? Is that correct?
Well, I, no, actually, what I'm asking is, is this, is it, is it correct? This is not a technical issue that will...
The technical issue was under the first part of the resolution.
Uh-huh.
On page one, that cannot be more than seventy-five words.
All right, hold on, let me see.
On the very first page.
You can't, you saw...
I did a word count on it, seventy-four words.
All right.
The very, the very first front page.
Right.
Block, that cannot be more than seventy-five words. The other part was, is that when you, on the official ballot, under, when you do a normal resolution and everything, it should only say yes or no. On your two-twelve-point-oh-five-five, the statute specifically states it has to say for the one-half cent sales tax or against the one-half cent sales tax. That's the two changes that I made until this Powers pointed out that I had an N instead of a M. I apologize for it. Spell check doesn't pick that up.
That's okay, I wouldn't have told you.
Well, then, Wes, in the, in the resolution itself, though, it's not in the resolution itself either, the time period, is it?
In paragraph, subsection, section two of paragraph D, it says, "The levy of the sales tax shall be for a period of ten years, beginning January first, two thousand and seventeen." And in section four, it says, "The sales tax shall end on December thirty-first, two thousand, and that will be forty-seven."
Okay. So that little, that top wording part where the resolution is, that's what, that's not going anywhere to voters?
It'll be part of what's published, what replaces...
Part of what's published.
Right.
Okay. But that's, that's not a requirement for us to have the, the ten years in that part of the resolution?
No.
Okay, because we have it.
Because there's certain other matters in connection therewith that covers that and providing an effective date.
Okay.
You don't have to have that in, in that top part.
So, okay, so then, under the exhibit that I referenced, so then, if that's not going to have, that technically doesn't have to go in that part of the exhibit either, then the time, the time period?
It's going to be contained in the resolution, that's going to be printed in, inside of there also, and it's also in the official ballot, not to exceed ten years.
Right, okay, well, I, and there, there may not be a need, need for us to change it, but I just want to make sure, because that caught me, that caught me a little bit off-guard when it didn't have the, the, the number of years in there. I mean, I see the years, obviously, in the, on the ballot, and I see what you're saying now on the resolution, that it was in D, but I just didn't know if it would be required to be elsewhere in the, in the resolution.
I don't think it's required. I think if you would like it placed in there, that's not an issue.
Well, and Exhibit A deals with, it's expenditures authorized for fixed count with expenditures, which you're going to put that project.
Correct.
Right. Okay. So there's nothing really called for there. Well, I mean, you're our legal advisor, if it's not, if it's not needed to be changed, I mean, I, I, I don't, see, we have to change it, right? I just, but I just...
I think if you want it, if, I mean, I think it's, it's not legally necessary, although I think if you want to add it in there, it's not prohibited from me, you know, adding it in there. This is the notice that, you know, that's going to be placed into the newspaper. The official thing that goes to the Board of County Commission to be placed on the ballot is the actual resolution and the, and the official ballot. So this is the notice that gets published in the newspaper.
So it could hurt, but it isn't?
If you want it in there, I'll add it. I don't, I don't have the property, and I'll just add for a period not to exceed ten years and insert the form of the resolution in there also.
Simon, my motion to say, to add...
To, to, to modify paragraph on Exhibit B, paragraph, the first paragraph to include language to statement that does not exceed ten years.
Second.
Okay, on all seven?
Hi.
And you corrected it, therefore, not...
Mr. Bradshaw, just two, two quick, I hope, quick things, or intending them to be. One is, have we verified yet the required approval percentage needed?
Majority of the voters.
So basically fifty plus one vote?
That's what the statute says.
And that's what I thought that I wanted to, because I think that's important, obviously, for us to understand. The other one is, and it's not necessarily an answer for now, but maybe if you can help advise us along this process soon, what can the board promote? What things we can use and what we can't? Because I know there are limitations on both sides, and I think we probably want to do as much as we can to be promoting, but I think we need to...
But we don't want to break them off.
But we don't want to break them off, we want to, you know, intend to do that correctly.
I want to say that memory search, correct? I did think I did a memorandum to someone back when they were, when you, when you had the option of adding back the point-two-five mils, and you did that, I think I'd send a letter or a memorandum explaining what you could, could not, not do as far as, you know, expenditures, monies, and different kinds of things.
You know, something, just an active campaign, there's some...
Yeah, and that's why I said, I think maybe if we could get, just get that. I know that there, that boards have throughout the, the state utilized, and I would encourage our educational foundation to take an active role in this. That is very common that's done, and they certainly, I think, have more discretion in promotion and funding of promotions of things of that nature. And there may be other groups that, you know, that are willing to or that are looking to do.
Do you have any others that you want to do?
And I, I think you've got, or we've already got a grassroots group that's doing, but I would just, I just was wanting for us to know, again, what we can and can't do. So, thank you, Mr. Bradshaw.
And the one-half cent is, that's the recommended way on other districts, they use one-half cent instead of half-cent?
Yes, that's by statute. And that's the way it is in the statute, except for I put in the one-half cent.
Right, yeah.
For the statute, for the one-half cent sales tax. Or you could do for a quarter. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, you could, it's up to one-half cent.
Right, well, I'm just saying, I, I was just thinking of wording, I was just thinking, to me, half, you know, half-cent is obviously half of a cent, but we're one-half cent.
You think someone will misinterpret it as one-half?
Well, I'm just throwing that out there.
Right, and that's impossible.
You know, but if it's, if it's the way it's supposed to be worded by statute, one-half cent, then that's where you have to go.
Yeah, when you read it this clear, if you say it, it can be not clear.
Yeah. For the one-half cent, you know, put in the parentheses, one-half. You don't understand that sales taxes.
And can we say, do you levy for a period? Did you get, did you get that? Is there, was there any discussion on that, or Ms. Powers?
We both voted on that, so...
Okay, for a period, okay.
Oh, you're talking about the A, no, I was just...
I was just asking, are the...
Well, yeah, we voted for a period, not to exceed ten years.
Oh, well, I, on Exhibit B, correct? In the first...
I'm talking about on the wording of the ballot. One-half cent per dollar sales tax be levied, levied for a period not to exceed ten years.
But talk about it.
Oh, I thought it said just said for a period. They, they left A out of line.
For a period not to exceed...
Mine just says levy...
For...
Mine just says levy for period.
For A.
Levy for a period, not to exceed ten years.
I watch. Then Ginger said that, that said we voted on it.
Right.
Good. Listen, who we leave off?
Right, yeah, before... So, just so I have this straight, on the resolution, I'm going to make it for ten years. It's going to be through December thirty-first, I believe, in two thousand and twenty-seven. I believe that is ten years for January first, two thousand and seventeen, because it's starting, it'll start January one. It's going to be a special referendum on August thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. But to modify the one paragraph to say, because it should say surtax be levied for a period of ten years, I will correct it throughout. And then on Exhibit B, in the first paragraph, what I'll probably do is say, approve of the levy by the Citrus County School Board of, that should be, a one-half cent per dollar sales tax, comma, not to exceed ten years, comma, in Citrus County, Florida. Is that something acceptable?
I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't pointing on that. Did you see that one?
They would say, for a one-half cent per dollar sales surtax, comma, not to exceed ten years, in Citrus County, Florida.
Okay. Now, and let's just do this right now, it would actually go through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, or...
Twenty twenty-six, whatever, yes, ten years.
Twenty twenty-six, yeah.
I will do the date calculator on my computer and my...
Right, yeah, it'll expire in twenty twenty, the last day.
It's been drawn to seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-two.
Are we, are we through them all then?
Yes, yeah.
And now where do we leave off up here?
Mr. Ken.
I'm done.
Are you finished? Okay. Mr. Dodd? I have one question. This would like to take us out on June the night. Who can I have on going with me?
I'm going to be there.
Okay, thank you.
I'm okay, I'm good.
Somebody's got to wash you.
Exactly.
If there's nothing, anyone needs to say anything? Okay, then maybe hands and chair.
All right.
See you all later. Okay. Oh, six...